Ready? I want to call to order this special zoning meeting of Genoa Township Board of Trustees. Today's date is July 16th, 2025. The time is 6:30 PM. Roll call, please, Joe.
Roll call, trustee Vaughn?
Here.
Trustee Antonetts?
Here.
Trustee McMurray?
Here.
Also with us this evening is Joe Schaefer, Director of Development and Zoning, Paul Benson, Deputy Zoning Inspector, Dave Leff, Zoning Commission Chair, and Peter Griggs at Brosius Jones Johnson &amp; Griggs. This meeting of the Genoa Township Trustees will be recorded. The meeting, audio, and written minutes will be available on Genoa Township's website, www.genoattp.com, or by contracting Genoa's fiscal office. I'd like to call the following hearing to order at 6:30 PM. Note that the legal notice and exhibits were read at the previous meeting and asked everyone who wished to speak to this matter to stand and to be sworn in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth to help you God? I'm going to preface this meeting with a couple of comments before we go into formal review. We are not going to be voting on this this evening. It's entirely too extensive. It's painfully obvious. The zoning commission had five hearings. Joe's put in countless hours preparing this. Review of this is extensive. And for that reason, this evening, we are going to present it. Joe's going to make a presentation. We're going to ask legal counsel, Peter Griggs, to address some of the concerns we've gotten from some of the residents, some of the issues in the revisions, and then open up the public comment. And then after that, we'll schedule the next hearing. So having said that, Joe, you want to give staff report?
Yes, sir.
Briefly?
Yes. I prepared a PowerPoint which has been posted on the website for a while now on the page that we've maintained for this amendment. I'll not read the slides to you all, so I'll just go through the highlights here. We define what omnibus is and also talk about the last one that we did that was, or some of the last amendments we've done over the years. The last one that was omnibus in nature was back in 2020. We've also done amendments regarding signs, PRD, density, the Hoover watershed overlay over the years. Why change? I think we all sort of know, zoning regulations continue to need to evolve.
Is your speaker on?
Oh, sorry. Don't get it closer to me. The resolution's a living, breathing document. So we're always looking at emerging technologies, things that are happening in the community, and we're always trying to adapt to those things. In addition to that, you may recall the comprehensive plan that we worked on in 2015 and I think technically was adopted in early 2016, or I'm sorry, late 2016, provided us a whole punch list of to-do items in the resolution. And we've chipped away at those over the years, including the amendments I just mentioned, but we haven't gotten to all of them. So I've gone through the items here in the PowerPoint. And again, I'm not going to read them all to you, but struck through are the items from the comp plan, that list that we've already done with completion dates. The bolded items, as you can see with notes, are the items we're attempting to address with this amendment. And there's, goes on and on. And like I said, this is posted to the website. I'm happy to go or discuss in depth any one of these items, but that's the gist of it. So the primary goal is, obviously, we want to protect public health, safety, general welfare of the township. Want to comply with legal advice and all laws, especially as they continue to evolve and change at the state and federal levels. We're always listening to the needs, wants, and desires of the community. We're always looking at how planning and zoning trends are changing in not only central Ohio, but across the country, and what's being done and what we're seeing and can learn from other communities, both the things they do well and the mistakes they've made. We want a transparent, pragmatic document that can be administrated effectively by staff as well as the zoning commission, the trustees, and the BZA. And we always, obviously, want to respect the rights and autonomy of our township presidents. I've gone through some of the challenges here of things that I feel like have needed to be addressed, these sort of elaborate more on the list I just went through from the comp plan. Land use classifications, how we're defining them, the standards for especially conditional uses I feel like really needed to be worked on in a major way. The language reflecting what our authority is and whose authority and who does what I felt like needed clarified in the document further, based on commentary we were receiving at some of the meetings. Seemed to be some misunderstandings regards to that aspect. Some of the standards just are falling short or not working. Some of the regulations I don't feel like anticipate current and future technologies. And also, there's just formatting, presentation order, structural items, and how things are presented in the document that I felt like needed to be improved. Obviously, there's a lot of things we have to consider: growth, infrastructure, annexation pressure, redevelopment, demographics, obviously resident feedback, the laws I've already mentioned, legal risks, liability, all of those things. A lot of these things I've already mentioned, so I'm going to move on. And there's obviously a whole bunch of things we should not be doing and things we want to avoid. They're all listed there. So the past so far, so I think this is probably a little more relevant here. So as I mentioned, 2015, 2016 sort of set the foundation of a lot of these items in the comp plan. 2017 is when I probably really started researching and drafting the components that are in this document. I mean, it does go that far back. Why, people might ask, well, why did it take from 2017 to now? Well, as I said, we worked on several other amendments during that time period that took just precedence over this. And I always knew that this was going to be a very heavy lift, which is why I wanted to get some of those items done first and in place before I started attacking the items that are in here. So in 2023, the trustees and the zoning commission both noted during the discussions we had about the amendment we did to the comp plan and the resolution regarding density that we would be going back to this document again and doing more revisions to items that didn't pertain to density. And so we got here today. So a little more in depth, the zoning commission officially started reviewing the draft that I had initially given to them back in January of '24. They spent from January of June of '24 sort of just going through the draft, making changes to the draft. And in June of '24, determined that they were ready to send it out for legal review as well as we wanted a review by the Delaware County Regional Planning Commission staff. That's not the Regional Planning Commission staff's official review. We actually wanted them to review the document ahead of time to make sure there wasn't anything major that they were going to catch. So over the summer, those reviews occurred. I got the results from legal in August. Regional Planning followed up shortly in September with their commentary. We, I brought that commentary to the commission in October of '24. They reviewed it, asked me to make some additional changes in response to that commentary. In the November of '24, decided the document was ready to be formally initiated for the public hearing process. That first public hearing occurred in December of '24. Regional Planning voted on a recommendation in December of '24 as well. And then the commission continued, the hearings occurred on January 13th, February 10th, March 10th, April 14th. And then on June 9th, they decided, after all those meetings, that they were ready to vote on a recommendation for the document. And as you know, they voted to recommend approval of the draft you have before you this evening. You scheduled this me to open the hearing, on June 10th, you scheduled to open the hearing on June 26th, which we did. We automatically continued that hearing without any presentation or discussion to this evening. And that's how we've gotten here. In terms of going forward, it'll take as many meetings as the board feels necessary to go through the document. And eventually, you'll be asked to make a decision. If the document would be approved in some form, it would go into effect 30 days after the vote to approve. Obviously, if the document's denied, the resolution stays as is, and we move on. A general amendment categories, again, I'm not going to read through these. These are very high-level sort of categories of things that you might be able to classify some of these changes into. Again, speaking to what the document broadly does, I think I've covered that a lot already, but again, we're overhauling land use, the whole land use classification system and how we're regulating them. Relocating certain code sections to more appropriate or logical areas to, in my mind, provide more consistency and efficiency. Or addressing numerous topics identified by staff, township officials, and our residents as concerns or challenges over the years. You know, we tend to keep notes as stuff comes up of things that we think might need to get improved internally. And then when an amendment comes like this around, we try to get those done. We're establishing regulations for stuff we currently don't regulate in the document. CBUs, EV chargers, solar facilities. CBUs are the mail, combined mail kiosk, for those who aren't familiar with that terminology. Revance parking regulations. Provides greater flexibility to create a document that is more responsive to change and the unexpected in the future. Trying to standardize formatting. We're trying to provide significant clarification in a lot of contingencies for numerous situations in hopes that we don't have to try to do as much interpretation or counseling with, no offense to the attorneys, and have those rules in place so we know what to do in those situations. Trying to, I say strengthen, but it's really more of just clarifying, strengthening via clarification, the township zoning authority and procedures. And trying to make them as transparent and reflective of actual practice as well as the law as possible. So that way, if someone says, well, where does it say you can do this? Or what does it say who does what? I can point right to the document. Here's, here's where it is. It revises, improves, and deletes provisions that cannot be effectively enforced for a variety of reasons, you know, stuff we've had to learn the hard way that is just not working. There's a lot of things, obviously, it's not doing. We're not revising the planned residential density regulations. We're not removing or rescinding the Hoover watershed overlay district. We're not rezoning any property in the township. We're not, it does not codify bylaws, covenants, private deed restrictions of HOA's condo associations and the like. That all remains private, beyond our reach. And then here's just our contact information. So it's a very, very high-level overview, but the document's 400 pages. I didn't think you wanted to sit here and listen to a 100-page PowerPoint on all that. So as you know, I'm here to go in as deep and as long as you want me to. But I think with that, I'm going to turn the floor back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thanks. Before we go to public comment, there's some issues, I think, that might help allay some of the concerns the public has expressed that will require you, Mr. Griggs, to address. One significant one is the authority of the Board of Trustees to amend, revise, redact, remove any of these recommendations in the document.
Right. So, you know, the statute 51912 is the process for adoption of a text amendment. And once the process is initiated, and once it gets to you, the recommendation from the zoning commission, you have three options. One is you can approve it. One, you can deny it. The other option is approval with some sort of modification. Your modifications really need to be limited to the text that is being reviewed and revised by the zoning commission. So in other words, you can't go off on some other unrelated topic that the zoning commission did not review and recommend to you. So that is kind of where we're at procedurally. And those are your options. You can't send it back. It's up to you guys to make a decision. And yeah, so.
So explain the process.
Of course.
Explain the process of how we would then address items that were not in the recommendation.
So what I would recommend is you do another text amendment. Yep.
My question had to do with clarifying the first question. Because the zoning commission technically looked at every word in this document, and whether they chose to amend it or not amend it, some items were brought to the public to look at, and they chose not to act on it. Because they technically reviewed the entire document, why are we just limited to the ones that they are recommending that we change?
So there's, there's got to be some connection
Okay.
to what is being recommended by the zoning commission. And there's a little bit of guidance out there that says, and I'm going to narrow it down. And I think what trustee Vaughn, what makes this a little more difficult is that it is kind of a comprehensive overhaul. But let's, let's give a narrow example of maybe we're dealing with parking regulations. And the zoning commission moves parking regulations up to the trustees. And a trustee says, well, I have a fence issue that I want to discuss, and I want to amend the code on fences. That you can't do, right? So, you know, I'm a little reluctant to say that. I mean, it's really going to depend on what you're looking at, I think, and whether we can draw some sort of connection to what the zoning commission recommended. But that's just the way the process is really set up. And I think what makes it difficult here is that it is such a comprehensive amendment. But if there's, you know, something that was not changed, that maybe the zoning commission looked at it and decided they didn't want to change it, I'd be reluctant to say that you could modify it.
Okay.
That's just my advice, but. But again, doesn't prohibit the trustees from potentially issuing a directive that certain things weren't covered by this text amendment, and you would like the zoning commission to take up another text amendment. There's nothing wrong with that. You have the ability to initiate a text amendment as well.
So for clarification, the items that we reviewed in red, which are significant?
Yes, there's a lot of them.
We can remove, selectively remove?
Correct.
We can amend it?
Yep.
Just those items that have been revised?
Pretty much. Let's say, I mean, use just the parking regulations as an example. Like, let's say that three of the four sections in the parking regulation were altered. And maybe you're looking at that fourth one saying, hey, we, you know, maybe want to change that. I think that's okay, right? Because you're talking about parking regulations. But if there were sections that were not touched at all, I would be reluctant. But you're right, you could amend the text. You can say, no, we don't like this. We want to go back to the old text. You can add to that text. And all those would take the shape of an approval with a modification.
Very good. One other item that was brought to my attention, I don't know if the other trustees have gotten this information concerned from residents, is the confirmation that none of the language in here cedes the authority of the trustees and provides additional authority to the zoning director. That's, that is a big concern right now.
Sure, sure. And when I reviewed it initially, I, nothing jumped out at me. In fact, a lot of it is, just because I have the opportunity to work with so many zoning codes, fairly typical. And I think that one of the problems sometimes that residents or even trustees struggle with is that, that role, what your role is in terms of zoning. And I've given plenty of seminars for clients and OTA over the years. And there is nothing in this text amendment that removes any of your statutory authority at all. It simply clarifies the, at least from my perspective, the role of the zoning inspector under the 519 scheme, which is basically the manager of zoning and the regulations. It's Joe and staff's job to enforce, to implement, to interpret. And, you know, I have some clients that say, well, shouldn't the trustees be interpreting? No, they shouldn't be. That's up, that's up, that's up to the staff. Because the structure of 519 provides that when Joe or staff makes a determination or an interpretation, that's subject to appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals, right? And you all have no ability to appeal or change a decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Right? I had a client in Licking County that didn't want to listen. And they appealed the decision of a BZA. And what happened was the property owner won, and the township had to pay the attorney's fees associated with it. So there's, there's, there's a structure. And really, what your role is, you are the lawmakers. You are the policy setters. You act in a, for the most part, in a legislative capacity. So if Joe has interpreted something that you do not like, then you change the law. That's your role. So through this text amendment process, you don't like the interpretation or you don't like the results, then it's your job to initiate or instruct the zoning commission to initiate that text amendment to get the desired results that you would like. So staff's role is more ministerial, whereas your job is predominantly legislative. And then the BZA acts as kind of as a judiciary, right? Once you guys establish the rules, it's their job to apply the facts to the rules. So there is nothing in this document that gives me any concern. There is nothing in this document that removes any of your authority under 519. And I'll tell you what I'm seeing. And this is not in the law, but what I'm seeing, I'm seeing a significant push for staff to, for trustees are starting to delegate even more authority to staff. And the reason they're doing that is because, you know, you guys know this probably more than anybody. Things are difficult. They're complicated. You have to deal with police. You've got to deal with fire. You've got to deal with roads. You have all these other issues. And there are certain things sometimes, particularly with planned developments, that just bog townships down, where it makes more sense to give either, A, that authority to staff or the zoning commission. So I am seeing, and a lot of the stuff that we're starting to write, is giving kind of more review and authority to staff and zoning commission. But, but none of that is really here in your text. This is just a basic clarification of what the role is of the zoning department. So I can say that 100%. There, there's nothing in here that's removing your authority.
Thank you. So I've talked to Joe, and I have requested Joe to color-code these amendments revisions in this document. And I think what this will do is help people understand, because when I first reviewed it, I had lots of concerns, especially in the section about the trustees' responsibilities was completely crossed out. I think it will help residents understand that it was completely crossed out because, not because it was removed, because it was relocated somewhere else. So a lot of this is reshuffling to make the document more easier to read. And then I would like to have a color-code for any new amendments, any new resolutions, any new wording to be color-coded in different colors so the residents can clearly see this is proposed new language. This is not new language. It's relocated. For example, when you go through the districts and you see all the uses crossed out, it's not apparent, but it is apparent that this is done by creating a table, which actually makes this easier to read, because if it's one source, can you go through each district and see what the accessory uses are? So I've asked Joe to do this, and I'd like to see it also published on the website so we can continue this discussion. Residents can now review this thing in a color-code that identifies exactly what new language there is or what relocated language there is, deleted language. I don't know that we need anything much more than that. No? Agreed?
That's good.
Okay. Trustees anymore? Trustee McMurray? Thanks, both of you. Appreciate it. Chair, left, anything?
No, we spent a lot of time. Joe went through the timetable of what we did. And we're pretty happy with what we've gotten. There's a lot of discussion. There are some sections that we had massive amounts of discussion on that we didn't touch at all because we felt that the language was right after we did a full review. So my example is the Airbnb section.
Yeah.
So, or bed and breakfast piece. So you'll see that that didn't get changed, but there was a lot of discussion on that. So you probably heard that from our multiple meetings that we had, but it's a pretty comprehensive document, and we know that's a lot of reading, so.
Thanks.
I appreciate the zoning commission spending, you guys spent a lot of time, a lot of time.
Yeah, I've been on your seat when there's been amendments, and I know we've reviewed. Even the comprehensive plan was exhausting, so I expressed the same appreciation. Any other comments? We'll open up the public comment. Anyone? Yeah?
My name's Frank Dantonio, and I'm here this evening as a 43-year resident of Genoa, a former Genoa trustee, and the spokesperson for the zoning committee of the Genoa Township Residents for Responsible Development, also commonly known as GTRRD. Collectively, the five members of GTRRD's zoning committee have almost 100 years of living and zoning experiences in Genoa. After numerous hours of reading Genoa's current zoning resolution and reviewing literally thousands of proposed amendments, allegedly prepared by Genoa Zoning Commission and sometimes referred to as CZ case number 20425, ominous zoning resolution amendment, which is really not a zoning case because there was never a zoning application filed or a zoning fee, filing fee paid by an applicant. It's very clear that the proposed amendments do not address and do not fulfill all of the proposed purposes of the so-called severance criteria categories: legal consistency, enhancements, modernization, usability, clarification, organization, and administration. In fact, the proposed amendments create additional loopholes, inconsistencies, vague and ambiguous terms, such as in sections 104.02, 104.04, 114.01, 114.01D2, and 115.03D2. They do not improve the flow of the zoning resolution to be predictable and consistent. They do not improve the flow of the zoning resolution to be predictable and consistent. I reference all of the proposed amendments for that category. They are not sensible and practical. For instance, sections 104.02 and 112.02. They arbitrarily change long-established philosophies and practices of Genoa taxpayers, Articles 1 and 2. They arbitrarily change items that do not need to be changed, for instance, in section It usurps and infringes upon the trustees' current authority and intentionally removes the trustees from the zoning decision-making process, sections 112.02, 114.01K, and deleting sections 202, 202.01, 202.02, 202.03, and 202.04. It expands the unwarranted authority of the zoning inspector-director, Joe Schaefer, sections 112.02, 114.01, 114.01J, 114.01K, and 114.01M, as well as 115.01F, 115.02, 115.02O. It should be a logical, reasonable, dependable, and not excessively complex document that Genoa residents can read, understand, and comply with without needing to hire an attorney. And our reference to that is all of the proposed amendments. As a result, GTRRD's zoning committee unanimously has agreed it is critically important and respectfully requests the trustees to consider the following three recommendations. Do not grant any additional control or authority to Joe Schaefer, Genoa's zoning director, who is a non-Genoa resident and is unelected and an at-will Genoa employee. He should not have the opportunity or authority to manipulate Genoa's zoning resolution to work against the will of Genoa's taxpayers and elected trustees. Number two, deny, reject, decline, refuse, not accept all of the proposed amendments in their entirety. Number three, initiate a new process by the trustees of proposed amendments, possibly incorporating some, but certainly not all of Joe Schaefer's proposed amendments, with a definitive timeline. For instance, the trustees could schedule special public meetings in August 2025 to obtain input from Genoa residents and develop proposed amendments. Trustees could additionally schedule public meetings in September 2025 to prepare and send proposed amendments to Genoa's zoning commission with specific instructions and timeline to take action to approve, not approve, or modify such proposed amendments. Genoa's zoning commission could schedule special public meetings in October 2025 to take action to approve, not approve, or modify such proposed amendments. Trustees then schedule special public meetings in November 2025 to obtain input from Genoa residents and finalize their proposed amendments. Trustees schedule public meetings before December 15, 2025 to enact proposed amendments. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Any further public comment?
That's a hard act to follow.
Give it a shot.
Man, I'm telling you. Nice job. I'm Alan Vierling. I'm a resident. I live out on Sunbury Road. I appreciate the opportunity.
I'm sorry, what's your last name?
Vierling, V-I-E-R-L-I-N-G. So I've interacted with the zoning department frequently, a couple times, actually, and they have been fabulous. They're wonderful, and they've been helpful and easy to work with. But I read this document, and this is a bear. For what it's worth, I've got a doctorate. I'm a fairly well-educated guy, semi-retired, as long as my wife will let me stay semi-retired. This 454 pages is hard stuff. I mean, I've had the opportunity to run a couple billion-dollar corporations, healthcare systems. This is harder than anything I've ever read. And if I could run a healthcare corporation, I should think I'd be able to read the zoning laws and get it. And then there are things that are in there that are challenging for me. They did great work, but I don't think they were able to modernize as much as they wanted. There is a preparatory presentation that is on the public notice that is this presentation, and it talks about, there's a slide that says, "Things to Avoid." One of the things it says to avoid is unwarranted or overly rigid. This is not unwarranted or overly rigid. It is rigid in some respects, and is inconsistent with Ohio law. It's inconsistent with neighboring townships. I'm going to reference specifically Section 1609.1 accessory buildings. This is a pet peeve of mine. Most people, I'm sure, show up because they've got a pet peeve. This list, the 12-by-10 building, or 12-by-10 accessory building, has the one that doesn't require zoning approval. 12 by 10. Almost everywhere else around us, it's 200 square feet. The Ohio code is 200 square feet, and I recognize the ability of the law, the Ohio revised code, that gives the township the ability to override it, make it what it wants. I get that. I appreciate it. But I don't understand where the 12 by 10 came from. And when I ask, because I was originally told it was going to be, you know, 10 by 18, which still isn't the 200 square feet that areas around us have, I was told, well, that's the most common size purchased at Home Depot. Well, I mean, I don't know if that was actually the right answer. I don't think the person I asked the question tried to give me the wrong answer. I just don't think there was a discussion about how did you get to that? You know, where's the basis for that? And it's a silly thing, because honestly, I could buy two 10-by-10 buildings, put them right next to each other. I could do that, and I'd be within code. That doesn't make any sense. Now, for the homeowners, it also doesn't make sense. So I would like for the trustees, as you go through an onerous task, an onerous task, I'll bring you lemonade. I mean, damn. It's hard to think about those things that the homeowners are dealing with. I mean, it seems like a simple thing, but I want to be a compliant guy and really work with the zoning board. As I said, Paul in particular, I don't remember where he went, was fabulous. I mean, you show up here, the guy, he'll come out, and he'll talk to you and explain things. He's great. And I think they're trying to do their best, but I think things got missed. And I think this is too big to incorporate all in one setting. Like you said earlier, trustee Antonetti, I think you can't do this in one setting. It has to be done and broken up, and then you've got to have some public discussions, some public debate. I appreciate your time. Thanks very much. With all due respect to the zoning folks, they try hard, and they've got a difficult job, but some things just don't make sense. They're not logical, and they are rigid, and they're far more rigid than they need to be. There are things about, there are other things in there that I would take back to the zoning board and say, how did you come to this conclusion? And work through that. And I want to apologize to the members of the zoning commission. I would have been much more actively engaged, but I just finished an engagement in Alaska for the past three years, where I got to come home once a month. You know, I've lived there, you know, so pay taxes here, though. I want you to know that. Very high taxes.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, paying taxes here. But being in Alaska for three years does make it hard to get back for zoning meetings, but that'll change. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say that we are going to encourage public participation in this, and I'm frankly shocked that we only have two speakers this evening regarding this subject. And I would encourage others to get involved, because, you know, we can't address your concerns if we don't know what they are. So I'm willing to sit down with you, Mr. Dantonio, and go through all of these concerns and figure out how we can create the language that you think might be beneficial. I do stuff literally all over the country, requires me to review zoning documents from all over the country, and I am also not proposing that we make this thing more complicated and read like a law book. So that's how I'm going to do my review of this, is what can we do to make this thing read simpler? I think your, one specific one that came to my attention was the section that removed the trustees' authority, but from what I understand, it was just relocated. So that's why I'm asking Joe to be able to define on this document what's being removed, what's being added, what's being relocated, so that your concerns will be addressed in a document that's easier to read, if that makes sense.
It does make sense, providing the movement of that does not contradict something else that's already in there. So we do not, so all we do is add ambiguity, loopholes, complexity. If it says X in Chapter 13, but it says Y in Chapter 2, and they contradict, what have we accomplished? So there are literally thousands of edits that have been done, thousands. And you need to be superhuman in order to be tracing them back and forth. But when they're removed from point A and moved to point B, but we now got point C, D, and E that have been inserted, and they trump each other, who's going to be the referee? That's what this document is laced of. It does not meet its seven criteria. It does not. It fails miserably. Ours, and I'm the spokesperson, but there are five of us. So there are really six people who spoke this evening, the committee, zoning committee, as well as that gentleman. Throw this thing out, start over, take the good stuff that is in the code, in the resolution to begin with, take the good stuff from Joe Schaefer, and add your own touch to it, and send it downhill. Send it to the zoning commission, not just to review, not give them 14 years to get a job done. God created the earth, and six days took the seventh day off. I think that we can get this done in five months if there's a will to do so. That will starts at the trustees. There has to be two of you that says, this is what we're going to do. And then it shall be done. It will get accomplished. But if you just throw it to the zoning commission, it'll be 2030 before it comes back up. That's just the way that they operate. I don't know why, but I've sat in your chair. I've seen it firsthand. That's just the way that they do things. And to date, trustees have never had the intestinal fortitude to tell, to give directives to the zoning director and the zoning commission what to do. I don't understand why, but I'm going to say, we, we never have. You never have. So I appreciate the color coding. It may make it a little easier, but it's not going to help with the ambiguity. It's not going to give certainty. It's not, it's going to add complexity. That's what we're trying to achieve. If we can't read it, and we can't understand it, meaning the taxpayers who foot the bills for all of this, then there's no way that we can comply with it. And you'll see various inserts where the zoning inspector has to consult with legal counsel. That's in our resolution. Red flag. Why? Why do we need to put that in the resolution that at the zoning inspector's discretion, they can seek legal counsel? That's absurd. Trustees should approve that, or at a minimum, the township administrator, not a zoning director, should not have the ability to go out and seek legal counsel on an opinion that they want incorporated. Thank you.
That's why we're here. And I do take exception to your claim that we don't give department heads direction. We do. Maybe you didn't, but we do.
Good. Which one have you done that to?
Figure it out.
It would be more helpful to me if public input would include things that you like about the current proposal and things that you don't, not just throw it out. You can't tell me that out of 1,000-plus changes, there isn't one good thing in this document. I just don't think that it makes sense to throw the whole thing out. I think there are good parts in here. I do think that the color coding may be able to help us in the public figure out where the ambiguities are, if there are any, because you'll be able to compare. I also think the Ctrl+F function on a computer will help. If you're looking for certain verbiage, it'll go ahead and search it for you. So I think there are ways to work through this document once you know what you're looking I have a question about, I know when we went through the PowerPoint, there were several opportunities for the public to provide input. Can someone, David maybe, tell me how those were attended? What kind of public feedback you got? Because you held several meetings where you asked for public input.
Yeah, so there were quite a few emails sent that were reviewed for the group. Joe was able to send those out to the group, so we were able to talk about each one. And then if we had specific comments, they were discussed while we were in setting. And then when we had public comment, we took those under advisement, and as we walked through those the next month, then we talked about whether or not we would work on those or add them or modify them. So there was a continual back and forth of, well, the comments were made, we discussed it, and then made decisions of how we would move forward with it.
And the question is subjective. Did you have a lot of public input? Was, I mean, handful at each meeting? No one?
Uh, ranged, probably.
I would say we got a lot of comment, but from few individuals.
Yeah.
Is how I would answer that question. In fact, I would need to go back and look at the minutes. Honestly, I feel like the number of individuals that we heard from during the zoning commission stage, less than 10?
Total, maybe, yeah. I mean, one meeting, we might have had six people show up, which was well-attended, and one meeting, zero. So.
I just know from the emails Joe shared with us, there weren't many, and the ones we got were from the same handful of people.
Yeah.
And some of those comments prompted some very longstanding discussion as well, so.
Any comments the commission got, or I passed on to you as part of the whole package?
Yep. Okay.
Okay, I'm going to move to continue the public hearing for the subject zoning text amendment dated June 9, 2025, also known as EC case 2024-5 until... And I don't recommend we wait till the next meeting.
Nope.
I'd like to do this, and maybe, Joe, if you can create that. Okay. How soon can you amend that to be color-coded?
I'll need to figure out the best way to do it, as whether or not I'm going to do it in Word via that highlight function, or if I'm going to try to modify the PDF. And I also have to figure out the categories, because as sort of was stated, there's stuff that was just moved, there was stuff but moved, but revised, and stuff that is brand-new, and obviously stuff that's gotten deleted, but I think that's pretty evident.
All right, so having.
I'd like at least a week or two.
Okay, that's fine. I don't think we're going to do this. So I'm out of town from the 24th to the 28th. So I would offer July 29th or the 30th.
And the room is available both of those dates.
Yep. Either one worked for me.
All right. So you would need to get that thing created next week in order for us to review and have it ready to discuss on the 30th.
Clear my schedule, get it done.
Okay. So on the Wednesday, the 30th, at 6:30?
That's fine.
Okay. Wednesday, June 30th, at 6:30, July 30th, sorry. Wishful thinking. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Roll.
Trustee Vaughn?
Yes.
Trustee McMurray?
Yes.
Trustee Antonetts?
Yes. There being no further issues, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Time is 7:19, do I have a second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting's adjourned.